Okay, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. It's Friday, it's Thursday, January nineteenth, two, twenty twenty-three, Ross Board of Education Work Session. Mrs. Logan, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Kleinfeldter.
President.
Mr. Chanel.
Here.
Mrs. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Van Winkle.
Here. Just for the record, Mrs. Hayes will be coming in here shortly. She's coming straight from work.
Okay.
With that being said, turn the floor right over to you, Dr. Kunkel.
Yes, sir, thank you. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. First one is a curriculum update, and then the second item will be a discussion on the resolution. There are copies there for the audience. That's hot off the press, so Mrs. Logan and Mr. Castater will talk about the resolution on the agenda, and then I'm asking the school board to go into executive session for personnel reasons when those two items are done.
Awesome. Mr. Richards, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everybody, for having me back after a long hiatus from board meetings, but I'm excited to be here and to present an update of where we're at in the Curriculum Department. You know, as I started to prepare for this meeting, I thought it would be wise to revisit some of the goals that we laid out at the beginning of the year back in August, because obviously, as, as organizations go through especially adversity, some of the adversity that we're going through as a, as a district, it's always wise to revisit where we started and to, to figure out if we need to shift where we're headed. And so that's what we've done since, since August, and so I'm going to outline what those shifts are in terms of our focus areas, and then we'll get into some of the data that's, that we can, we can actually be happy about, which is our, our report card data. There's a quote, I, I'm not so self-important that like the me at the bottom, there are a lot of other quotes in this, in this presentation originally, but I thought this was a, this is one of the more important guiding, guiding statements of what, what we do. So, back in the fall, we introduced this as the Curriculum Department mission. Nothing, nothing crazy here. Our job as a curriculum department in a public educational setting is to teach our kids, not only through the curricular offerings that we have, but through the co-curricular, the co-curricular, the extracurricular. Our goal is to merge all that together to give our kids a great learning experience. So the Ross Local School District Curriculum Department will implement systems that empower educators to develop each learner academically, socially, and emotionally. And I think we'd all agree that the social and emotional piece of that has become ever more important than, than it has been. So, wanted to start with this. This is a little bit of the process behind, behind how we operate in the Curriculum Department, and probably much the same as, as how a lot of educators, school board members, administrators, how they, they go about their business. And this is a feedback loop. Many years ago, I thought myself, you know, an entrepreneur, I was going to start a business, and I'm glad I didn't, because it probably would have been an epic failure. But, a book that I, it all started with a book that I read, like most great ideas that I have. And this was, this was the key, key component of that book, and this is a, a feedback loop. And so this, this process is one that we, we practice every day. So Tracy Wright and I sit over in the office there, and at some point during the day, we will get to a, a problem, we'll be focused on a project, we'll be looking at, at personnel, curriculum, et cetera, and we will get to this point where we say, okay, what do we need to do to satisfy the immediate need? So what do we need to do to get the job done right now? Once, once we get that out, then it's, okay, how did it go? That's where we're measuring whatever the product is. We're looking at the, the data that we've produced, and then as we look at the data, we talk about what we can learn from that data, and then go back to the beginning of the loop. And so it's this, this feedback loop, and you'll see throughout the presentation here how we, we apply that to a lot of the different areas of what we do in the Curriculum Department. So these were the, the three focus areas that we introduced back in August. We had social-emotional learning, we had high-quality student data, that's that HQSD piece, and we had optimization of our, our systems. So looking at the systems that we, we operate with and making sure that we are doing, doing so in an optimal fashion. And so these are the revised Curriculum Department focus areas. And the two, the first two are the ones that we've, we've changed the most, and as you'll see, we, we broadened the scope of each of those focus areas into wellness with students and staff, and into data, not just high-quality student data, but data and effective use of that data. So, up first, social-emotional learning. We, we started with this, this goal to, to implement a program, K through twelve, to make sure that our students, we were addressing their social and emotional learning needs. Well, we quickly realized that if we focus just on the students' social-emotional learning needs, we're leaving out a whole population of folks in our organization that, let's be honest, they need some love too, and that's our staff. And then that obviously trickles out into the, into the community as well. And so we broadened that scope to, to, to make it wellness with our students and staff. And so that includes the following areas. We, we still have the student SEL, very, very critical component of this. We've got the embedded curriculum, we've started with, we've got Character Strong at the high school, as well as some, some weekly check-ins to make sure that our students are mentally and emotionally safe, they're mentally and emotionally supported, and, and there's been, there have been some implementation issues with that. And that's part of, then the second bullet point there, the feedback, the feedback loop. So we've gotten with BLT, our Building Leadership Team, we've gotten with some of the staff to make sure that, that what we're doing is making, making their lives easier, and also doing what we say they're, say it's going to do, which is making sure that our, our kids are mentally and socially healthy. Tiered support, I'm sorry, we'll go over to staff growth. Okay, I've got a, an acronym in quotes there, that's PPD. We've all heard of PD, professional development, but as, you know, I've gone through a couple of, of cycles of planning PD days, so giving staff some professional development opportunities, I've realized that, that one of the most important things that we need to do is also remember that there's another P involved there, and that's, that's personal development. Okay, so our staff is, is working their tails off, they're working their tails off every day to give our kids a great learning experience, and if we approach professional development without remembering that they're people too, and that they need to be developed personally as they are developing professionally, then I think we're, we're missing the boat there. And so what we're, we're trying to do is to address personal and professional development with purpose. So I, I would hope that our staff agrees with that, and, and as you'll see, as we move through, through the presentation, and, and you know, some of the, the initiatives that we're starting for next year, I think they're really going to feel, feel that. Tiered support, so there's another acronym, acronym there, Love Acronyms in Education. This particular one is, is kind of a newer concept, but it's, it's a lot of the same stuff that we've always done as educators, and that's MTSS, which is a multi-tiered support system, multi-tiered support system. And the goal of an MTSS framework is to address the needs of all, or all the needs of a child. Instead of just looking at their academic support, what we need to do in, in terms of, you know, tier one, two, three, support, it looks at academics, it looks at social-emotional growth, it looks at the connections that these kids have in our buildings and in our community, and make sure that we can not only leverage some of those connections, but also, also then continue to grow the child in a way that's appropriate for that child. And so that allows us also, and, and this is, we're, we're just starting to develop, to develop this, this framework. And so there's a lot more to come on that, and I'm, I'm really excited about that, and, and I hope that, that next year this time, we'll be able to talk about our full-scale MTSS implementation. But that will allow us, you know, as we, as we look, we start, you know, doing this deep dive, looking at our resources and how we use them effectively, that's going to allow us to target some of our resources a, a little, a little better. And then finally, we've got wraparound services. So, one of the most exciting things of, you know, in the Curriculum Department lately is that we've, we've begun meeting with our school counselors on a monthly basis. So every counselor from every building comes over to the, the office over there, and we, we sit, sit there for a couple hours, and we, we really look at what we're doing in terms of our counseling services, not only to make sure that they're aligned across the buildings and across the grade levels, but also to make sure that, that what we're doing is once again, serving our mission, which is to help our kids grow academically and socially. And so we've, we've started to, to explore external partnerships, so namely Catalyst, who was our, our school psychology, third party. We've got MindPeace, which oversees a lot of the mental health services in the area, Cincinnati Children's. Okay, so we're starting to develop these external partnerships that I think are going to help us provide wraparound services for our children. So the kids that come in, we've got, you know, we've got them able to meet, for the most part, able to meet with therapists if they need to, but we also know that, that, you know, we can't be with them all the time, and so we need to be able to offer them services out in the community that are going to help our kids remain mentally safe. And that's, that's our, one of our goals, is to, to provide that complete support within our, within our ability. So that's, that's kind of some of the revamped wellness focus area. The next area that we, we have had a shift in is in our approach to not only data analysis, but, but data usage. And so, we started out the year really folk, I think I, I'll be honest, to be transparent about this, I had just come from a, a training on the new OTES evaluation system, and so I saw HQSD as like, yes, that's it. And then I realized pretty quickly that if we just focus on HQSD, which is high-quality student data, we are going to miss a lot of what we need to, to look at in terms of, in terms of data. And so we brought in that to data and effective data usage, and that includes the following. So we've, we've broken it down to individual data analysis and usage, team, and then organization. So on the individual, individual level, a lot of, of what our teachers have done is they've, they've really looked at the value-added analysis, which is, which is how they are measured from the state, so on the state testing, how they grow kids according to the expectations that the state has for those kids. And so teachers have, have started to look at that from last year's, last year's data, started to have conversations with students to make sure that they know where they are, not only on the state test, but on some of the other academic testing that we do. So the student, you know, starts, starts to take ownership, and then we have targeted instruction. So our, our teachers have gone through the professional learning, and they've started to look at how they can, they can tweak some of what they do, which is already awesome, but they can tweak some of what they do to make sure that, that down the road, they can look at this year's value-added and see, and see improvement. Then we've got on the team level. So on the team level, we've really started to try to get, get folks to team up, collaborate with their, not only with their, their content level or content area colleagues, but also their grade level and even building-wide to analyze that data, and then start to share the instructional strategies. There's no better teacher in terms of professional learning than teachers, and every teacher who's ever, who's ever lived knows that. Sharing, sharing some of the powerful instructional strategies, sharing their insights about the kids that are in their classrooms. And so I think all the educators in the room would agree that, you know, this kid in this classroom probably has some of the same issues in this other classroom, and if we can get together on that and talk about that, then we can start to really address those, address those issues in a targeted way. And then obviously, educational and professional growth as, as content areas, grade levels, and, and school buildings. And then we've got the organizational data analysis and use. So we look at, you know, at the district level, we look at kind of the global analysis of data, and I'll show you some of that here shortly. We look at how we use our resources to help improve that data, and then that data is always a great organizational health check. And so we can, we can look at any, any snapshot of data, whether it's financial, educational, social, emotional, and kind of do a, a temperature check of the organization as a whole, so that we know that we're still trending in the right way. So that leads us into some of the Ohio State Test Report Card Data from last year, and I know we've pushed this off a couple of months just because some other stuff going on. We won't get too deep into it tonight, but anybody in here, I'd be glad to have a conversation about, about some of the more detailed levels of the report card data at, at any point in the future. So, some of the great things, I'm just going to show the graphic, it's a lot, it's a lot cooler looking. Okay, so we've got, this is our, our district report card, that's some of the highlights. It's actually all of the measures, and they're all hi, or four or five are highlighted, which is pretty cool. So the green, green circle there means that it is the highest in Butler County. And so as a district, we perform the highest on achievement, which is the performance of students on the test. We perform the highest in graduation rate, and that's been several years running. You'll see our five-year rate there is ninety-seven point four percent graduation rate. We perform the highest on early literacy, which is tied to the third-grade reading tests, and we, we perform the highest on gap closing, which is when you look at student populations, you look at subgroups. So you've got English language learners, you've got chronically absent, you've got gifted, and we, we perform the highest in terms of, of making sure that those students showed, showed growth, you know, in terms of the, the state norms. And then in progress, didn't score the highest in Butler County, but we still knocked it out of the park with a four out of five stars. And so I've got, that's, that's that same information. I've got the different school buildings here. Once again, we're not going to go too far into detail here, but just a broad stroke. Here's Elda Elementary, four out of five on achievement and early literacy, and then five out of five on gap closing. And gap closing, I, I want to highlight that, because gap closing is a pretty important measure in, in the sense that that's how we're growing kids, especially some of the kids that, that need a, need a lot of help. We've got Morgan Elementary, five out of five on all three measures. There is no progress or graduation rate, obviously, at the, at the primary level. We've got the intermediate school, we've got the achievement, we've got progress, and we've got gap closing. Then we've got the middle school, which is four out of five on achievement and progress, and five out of five on, on gap closing. And then we've got the high school, which is four out of five on achievement and progress, and then five out of five on gap closing, and then, once again, on, on graduation rate, which, you know, that's a, a great mark, to graduate our kids and to send them off into the world ready to accomplish great things. And then finally, the last focus area is our systems optimization, and I'll just, I'll just throw this up there. These, these are some of those big ideas, and I think I explained this last time, we've got a whiteboard in the curriculum office, and we've got a list of, of our big ideas. I'm happy to say that some of these are, are coming to fruition already. We've got professional learning, I'm excited that hopefully in twenty-three, twenty-four, we've got a lot more time. I, I think that educators, you know, we've, we've pulled the educators, I've talked to teachers over and over. I was a teacher, and I know that there is not enough time to do what we're asking teachers to do. And so I'm excited that we are going to have more of that time built in, into, into the year next year, and that we will use that, you know, intentionally to make sure that teachers can get done what they need to do, so that they can, they can provide our kids with the best learning experience. And we've already, and we've already started to develop a lot of in-house opportunities, especially in the gifted, gifted realm, which, which relies a lot on our teachers teaching, teaching each other. Gifted education, we've got a family night in, in the works coming up this spring, and health and wellness. This is, is something that, that stemmed directly from the conversation with the counselors. You know, Dr. Conklin, Conkle and I met with the, the head of, of an organization called MindPeace, which is once again, it's like an umbrella organization for a lot of the wellness organizations in the area, and we are working now to develop a Ross Local Schools' system for making sure that our kids are mentally and socially and emotionally healthy. So that's in the works right now, really excited about that, because that, once again, helps us, helps us meet the needs of our kids. And that's it. Questions? Sorry, that's a lot of, a lot of info there to throw at you. Sorry, Sean.
No, you're good. The one part that was, I thought a big highlight is the continued external relationships with wraparound services. That, I think that's huge. I think there's a misconception, and even I had to get educated on this, of what high school counselors or middle school counselors actually do as far as that.
Right.
And sometimes it's not just, that's not in their wheelhouse.
Right.
And for us to be able to have these relationships with people, I think, will help our counselors here at the high school and the middle school as well, so, especially if they have the ability to make the contact with them early.
Right. And that's, that's the thing, if you've, you've spent time in an educational setting, you know, you know that a counselor can become kind of a catch-all.
Everything.
Go see your counselor. Okay? Well, the kid shows up, and they spill whatever out to the counselor, the counselor's like, wha, okay? And so this is giving them that support network to make sure that we are addressing the needs, because a kid coming in who is, is, you know, dealing with, with some mental and emotional stress, isn't going to be able to sit in a classroom and, and learn about the content areas they need to learn about. And so I, I agree, yes, that it's a, a good way to address those needs.
Mr. Kleinfeldter, do you have anything?
I know, like, do we have any data on like whether or not this, you know, that we're spending the social-emotional learning, has it given us value, do people like it, is it working? Like, are you going to come up with some? I know with FERPA and health, you know, kids that get referred to the health system, it's hard to follow up and find out what kind of treatments they're getting, and if it's helping them, because they kind of go off.
Right.
Off the radar at that point, but that would be beneficial for me to understand what's going on with.
Right. And, and that's going to be part of this, this wellness system that we're developing. Obviously, once again, back to the feedback loop, making sure that what we're, what we're providing with the resources we have, or what the resources we're connecting with in the community are actually satisfying the need of our, our kids.
Mr. Chanel, do you have anything?
I forget what, earlier in the presentation you called it, but there was, it was like key, key data, or, the name's not important, value, or, sorry. Anyway, kind of curious to hear, and maybe it's a question for in the future, but you know, as, as, as you continue to develop that, is it, how much of a learning curve is it? Is, is there, is it stuff where it's kind of teacher by teacher, you're going to have to see what works and what doesn't work, or so far, has it been pretty apparent that how to use that data and the success, has there been successes that way?
In terms?
That's kind of a weird question, I guess, but.
So in terms of teachers looking at their value-added data?
Yeah.
How they've grown students?
Value-added data, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think that it's always a, using value-added data is always going to be tricky, because it's always a year in arrears. So it's the kids you taught last year. So, so our teachers are looking at their value-added data for, for courses that they taught, taught last year, for students they taught last year, but it's the data we have at this moment. And so what teachers do then is look at their instruction, they look at their instructional strategies, they look at the, the framework in their classroom, and we, we can drill down to even the, the question level now. For the most part, English, the English content area kind of got the short end of the stick there this year from the state, won't get into that. But a lot of the content areas have, you know, the, the, in, in terms of the Ohio State Test, the best five items and the worst five items. So they can go through, and they look, and they can see standards attached to those items, and then they can look back at, at the instruction that they gave in terms of those standards, so those, those content standards, and say, okay, well, they missed, they missed two questions, you know, with this particular standard. And then they can go back to their instructional strategies, they can go back to the content that they were, that they were exposing the kids to, and, and make tweaks that way.
Okay.
If, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yep.
So it's kind of, the, the timing of it, you know, it's not synchronous, so it's kind of, it's kind of an odd thing, but it's, it's a great way for teachers to look at their own craft and to improve, improve that craft.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
Mrs. Hayes?
I feel like I'm in an awkward spot. In terms of professional development personally, like what are some things that you're doing for staff? And are you tapping into like the Butler County, like your insurance plan should usually have like a EAP or like an employee assistance program? Do we, do you guys have access to some, like through your insurance carrier? Like, is that what you're referring to, or are they more like?
So on actual?
Like, what are you doing?
So on actual professional learning days?
Like for their mental?
Yeah, and I, I can.
Not just like learning the new core standards or something?
No, no, I under, I understand, yeah. I can tell you that the number one thing that we've tried to do is to carve out time. Time is the number one resource that educators need, because Heather, you know as well as I do, if you get to work and your hair's on fire the entire shift, you're like, jeez, Pete, I know I can't, I can't catch a breath, and so our teachers are doing the exact same thing, or all, all our staff are doing the exact same thing. They get to school, they get to their building, they get to their office, wherever, and it's like hair on fire from, from start to finish. And so, so what we've tried to do is to strategically get, get done what we need to get done, in terms of required, requirements from the state, requirements, you know, in terms of local requirements. So get done what we can get done in the most efficient way possible, to make sure that our teachers have time to, to do whatever they need to do. Grade, look at, look at some of their instructional strategies to make sure that they are, they're walking into the classroom when the kids actually show up and they're ready to go, because nothing feels better as a teacher than walking in and saying, yeah, I got this, this is going to be great. And so that's, that's kind of where we've gone with it this year.
I just took this slide as more of a, like a in-service on wellness, or like, or we're going to, hey, we have EAP, or whatever we call it, or this is something if you, you know, a student died, or like that kind of, you know, like, or sadness, you know, plan or.
Yeah, and I, and I hate to keep saying, just wait till next year, and I know I've said that a couple of times in, in different words, but that, that, once again, is a, it's a correlation of, of time. I mean, we don't, this year, we've got four professional development days, which is not a whole lot of time, when we're talking about improving instruction and improving the learning experience for our kids. And so next year, hopefully, we've got a little bit more time, and then we can start to work in some of the stuff that, that, you know, some of that wellness stuff for, for our staff.
But we can promote that.
I was going to say, you can promote that with.
Yeah, we can promote that from the district.
District one.
Yes.
Without making a special day.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
This might be.
Right, for sure, for sure.
Ms. Webb?
I don't really have a question, Jake, I just, I, I appreciate the, like, the evolution of, of this, I guess, and like the reflection, and then you revisiting what you started at the beginning of the year, and tweaking things that worked to even make it more beneficial and enriching for students and staff. So I thought it was, I mean, very well laid out and organized, like it's, it was easy to follow, so I, I appreciate you taking the time to put it together.
Absolutely, thank you.
Awesome.
Good job, thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Anything else, Dr. Kunkel?
Nope, just want to say thanks to Jake for putting this together. We have great pockets of success, so now we're just kind of putting it into one plan, and much, much needed. Next on the agenda, we have Mrs. Logan and Mr. Castater, they're going to discuss the resolution.
Okay.
So that should be in your packet. Again, there's copies there for the audience, and, and Mrs. Logan and Mr. Castater.
The floor is yours.
Okay, so at our first regular meeting of this year, you adopted the resolution of necessity, and the process is you, you adopt the resolution of necessity, then it goes to the county auditor's office, they certify the millage, then it comes back to us, and the, the last step for you all is to adopt a resolution to proceed. So that's what you have before you, is a resolution to proceed. One of the things I want to kind of talk about that's going to look different on this resolution is also what has transpired since our last meeting, is we now have new valuation figures for our school district. At the time of the adoption of the first resolution, the only valuation that we had was what was current, we didn't have updated figures. So based on that valuation, the estimated millage was nine point five mils. We have a new valuation figure, which is a slight increase, and Steve, you want to?
Yeah.
I, I just put a, a little chart together, just kind of showing you what our valuation has been since two thousand nineteen, as well as just a little pie graph to show what makes that up, like what percentage of our total valuation is residential and agricultural, what percentage is industrial, commercial, and then public utility, personal property. So that chart is before you, but with all of this being said, our valuation increased slightly, point six percent, which means the millage that would be required is slightly lower. So instead of nine point five, it's nine point four four. And I think like Sean said earlier today, when he talked to me, that's the first piece of good news that I've brought to you, so, there's some good news. It is slightly lower millage, which, which is a good thing, it is an emergency levy. So, at the end of the day, all of this is based on an annual revenue number, and then they back into the millage. So, that's what's there before you for adoption at the regular meeting later tonight. So, any questions?
If I have any questions? Okay, Mr. Kleinfeldter, or, Mr., Dr. Kunkel, is that it?
That's it. I'd like to go into the executive session if.
Okay, we'll have a, can we have a first to go into executive session for personnel reasons with no action to follow?
Motion.
First, Mr. Chanel. Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Mrs. Hayes. Mrs. Logan, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Chanel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Kleinfelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Van Winkle?